Worked since it ordered, uh, the mayor couldn't be here tonight. Uh, I guess y'all had to eat, bear with me, we're trying to get through this. Uh, we'll go slow, it seems like sometimes we're gonna do this fast, so we go slow, just try to get stuff answered tonight before we, you know, uh. So the first thing, invocation by David Thomas. Flag Richard, I'll do that for Richard. Uh, I was telling in the other meeting, I went and saw Richard yesterday. He's in, uh, room three twenty-eight down at the summer hospital, if y'all down there, stop there saying, but he looked good, seemed like he was doing good. They said he's, uh, put him through a lot of therapy, so he was wore out, but, um, if you're down that way, stop there and say it, he probably appreciate. He didn't know how long, you know, how much longer he'd be in there, whatever, but I mean, he, he really looked good and seemed to be doing. Room two, no, three twenty-eight, I took his packet down there to him yesterday. Uh, and just put me, I'll do the, I'll do the play for him. All right, with a roll call, Rita Crowder. Uh, next thing will be the approval of minutes. Uh, we're going to announce, do you have any announcements, what do you, we might have any announcements, anything you might know this? Uh, we're about to parade, the four, we live, we'll probably, not, we'll talk about that in a second, we won't have another meeting after that.
Yes, July first, the.
That's the parade, will they have the fireworks that night afterwards or?
Yeah, it's Saturday, July the first.
Everybody hear that?
Good time on July first. I heard a clock to parade.
Fireworks are at nine.
Anybody else on their announcements for the night? Alrighty, we move on to number seven, approval, approval and amendments to the agenda. I don't know nothing, not now, not any amendments. Then we have citizens' response to the items. The county mayor report that, oh, he will be back for the regular meeting. Then we get into committee reports. Once this appears, anybody else had anybody besides what's listed on there? Not that we are committee reports. Then we move into active business. First thing will be acknowledgement certificate of compliance for Hartsell Liquors.
I just noticed I didn't include that in your packet, but, um, it is Hartstill Liquors again, um, they have, uh, they're adding another owner. So it has to be reapproved.
I, I, are y'all for the Hartsell Liquors, if I got any questions, or, so they, while they here? Appreciate y'all coming, our, our regular meeting will be next month, on like seven o'clock, to be here. Our, under appointments, the next line is an appointment here from bar chief. Blackie's point's Mark Wheeler, uh, here for ninety more days. Planning commission looks like assuming Rhonda Keating's like a term meeting April thirtieth, and then assuming Carol Pruitt's like a term February twenty-eighth, does you know if he's got any names?
I, I do have names for you, uh, Cal Welch will be taking Rhonda Keating's position, and a Katie Dillon for Carol Pruitt's.
Katie Dillon?
Katie Dillon.
I know Cal, I think, I do know him, I don't know Katie Dillon, but I like Cal, will do a good job.
Who'd you say the other one?
Katie Dillon. All right, with, um, anybody got any questions or comments on, on his appointments on that? Port of belonging appeal, assuming Karen Linn will spike a term meeting January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and then assuming the lot deals like a term meeting, uh, sign, and names for that?
I do, uh, Paul Knutson will be taking Karen Lindles, and Cicely Saputo, hope I'm saying that right, is assuming Dwight's.
I, what, how do you, what's that last name?
Saputo.
Oh, is that one, is it?
Yep, that is Ben's wife.
Yes, her husband is the, was it the?
He's the veteran service.
He's the veteran service officer. If I got any comments or questions on this?
No, I want to say that we want to run, give our prayers to Mr. Right Jewel, it's just like, it's not, it's not the judge.
Didn't want people to worry anymore for drink. Well, I just like, I mean, like I got some good names for this, I just wanted to basically, let's say, step up and serve, serve it. Alrighty, when we come to resolutions. But the first resolution is two oh two three fifteen seven eighty-four. This is a resolution to continue, uh, the Hartsell County Government Budget Operations, uh, as if our budget don't get passed before playing that.
It is kind of a C Y A resolution, so if the budget does not pass by June thirtieth, this resolution's in place, so we can continue government operations, just as it says. So it'll be basically bare minimum on expenses, um, until a budget is passed.
Got any more questions or comments on this? Alright, we move on to resolution two oh two three sixteen seven eighty-five, continuing of the lease agreements. That list there in front of you, it's, I think it's every year, uh, the ones we laces with, if I got any questions for primary, only any of these? So, all, what committee you thought, we can talk about these, uh, was it all, somebody was, was a, a, what was it?
That was Jerry Forbes.
Yeah.
That was purchasing problem.
Purchasing, I didn't know what it was.
Yes.
So on the, uh, artist networks, um, service agreement, uh, for I T agents, I T support and computer backup. Is that something that needs to be looked at? Uh, I know that Amy does a lot of the, the I T for the sheriff's department, um, when they have issues. Are we getting our money's worth out of that, or do we just need, have we grown to a point, we can't just contract it out, we actually need an I T person on staff?
To, to correct that, no offense on that, but, um, I don't do much on the I T for the sheriff. They do do a lot for the sheriff's department, my understanding, and Ray could probably speak to that. My I T is mainly in the administration building and for, um, the other county general departments, but my two cents, yes, I think it is worth looking into getting in.
Anybody? Do some of our work, so I can see you out there.
Yeah.
I know it used to be a committee that went over these and, I don't know what committee was, Mr. Ford was over that, he was in purchasing, I was purchase committee or something, and usually went over these every year. Was the will, I mean, anybody, any more questions or comments?
These vendors are the same ones we've used year after year, and it's just ones that we have contracts with, most of them are sole providers, um, a lot of them, we will, uh, reach out and rebid them and make sure we can, the lowest price for it.
We'll get anybody over there, we're still here.
Yes, sir. Uh, Ben Fayock is our veteran services officer. He's been there since, I want to say, I don't know, maybe? Ben Fayock?
He lives in, uh, in the first half of town, he was in, uh, best, he lived there.
Thomas, I would like to personally, um, state that I have had dealings with Ben from the veteran standpoint in dealing with my mother, and he is phenomenal. Uh, he's actually got, uh, an account set with B A, where he gets instant notices when they change things, as you're as veterans are having to go through, and, you know, as far as the claims, what is that process? He's great about sending out texts, emails, letting you know what, what's going on, um, could not say enough about the job he's doing.
Let's get back on the, uh, so when you say this resolution here, we made a motion to approve or whatever on that, I mean, we're going to discussion on this one. Alright, let's move on to resolution two oh two three one seven seven eight six, a resolution revising and approving the Hartsell County Road List, which, that's not an.
I, I didn't put the full twenty-six pages in the packet, but if you do want that hard copy, let me know, and I, I will get you that.
Yeah, we do.
What is that, Rose will be, what, you know?
It is rows that are under the, uh, care of the county.
Just the updated role list, and it may be some people's in my.
Pages.
Yeah, with about fifty rows on each one.
It, it is on the online, uh, file, if you'd like to look at it, or I can get you a hard copy.
But that's something we do, I like watching here, through the role list on this.
Are you, Rose? Tell me, it's kind of second off.
I don't know offhand. There, there is a list online, I can get you a hard copy if you'd like.
I would, yeah.
Should be, I think the last page is normally where her additions are.
Okay. Any more questions on that? Move on to resolution two oh one two three one eight seven eight seven, resolution adopting Tennessee Department of Economic Development, C D B G Housing Rehabilitation Problem Policies and Procedures.
This is going along with the C D B G grant for the housing rehabilitation, most of the properties are up on the hill, and as it plainly states, it's the policies and procedures for, um, applying to be one of the recipients of this grant, how the grant is going to work, and frankly, it's a lot of legalese, again, that, uh, that document was not included in your hard copy, but if you would like a hard copy, I can buy that piece.
Question? Move on to resolution two oh two three one nine seven eight eight, resolution of the Hartsell County Government authorizing issue, issuing, so it is burning general obligations, system capital outlay notes. Series two oh three, and not exceed one B and nine hundred thousand providing for the payment set notes. We got Mr. Fraschiski, he's here, he spoke with us at our budget finance. What we, what we discussed, and Mr. Go, budget finance?
Uh, so budget finance, we discussed this, uh, a few questions were asked, uh, and as we stated, right now, we break time to ask, to ask you, having any questions on this, that, that, rather than how that's, it's out, but there was some good discussion about the how and the dates of those things, um, what the finance did, uh, having favorable recommendation, you can decide, but, um, yeah, inside, there's a couple of options. The four point one nine, which is a ten-year lock note, is available to us as long as this is passed, in the month, June, three months, and then July fourteen, and then, then all paid, we're having sign us, this is always, a four point one nine, they put there a lock ten-year note, um, with a payment, payment roughly two hundred thirty-six thousand, that's the school portion of the million, the county portion of the nine hundred thousand, so, okay. Make a, make that, beginning duty, and, 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 um, so, uh, it was favorably recommended by the budget finance at a, at a five-year vote, and favorable recommendation, and this approved this resolution. If it doesn't be passing, this, this one, it comes back, we're going to have some discussion for the, for the readings, uh, because we're only locked through that, um, July fourteen, so, we've done a vast area, you know, rate will increase to, you think, uh, four, four, just like that, for the next one or two, so, pretty well discussed where we are, um, the only one that did this, um, uh, conversation wise, it is a, I know there's two discussions in the past, it's like, they're ten-year law, it's not five years, you know, something is a fourteen-year law. Uh, there is a five-year piece in it, it is, meaning you can only pay on the note exactly what's meant, because it's two hundred thirty-six thousand for the first time. You can't pay additional on the first, after five years, the county has that option to pay additional, whether it's the cost, five years would be exactly that number, you can't pay additional. I think that's about, sums up what we discussed.
Any other questions? I did, they just said that, uh, annual payment two hundred thirty-six thousand, probably, on the four point one nine, it'd be like two forty on the fourth, and four, you know, the year, time, you can see how much more that would cost him. And, uh, but he's here to answer any questions. He's here, I mean, if I got any questions regarding this, and my will's a good one, I think, it explains it pretty well. Anybody, any questions or comments on this? Like I said, it was a favorable recommendation, it's working finance on this. Alrighty, if not, we'll move on to next resolution, two oh two three two oh seven eight nine. This is the resolution authorized and execution terms, issue and sale and payment, I think, say, three mil, three million two hundred sixty-four thousand. General obligation refunding bonds, on this, uh, give us some, brief synopsis on this, we'll take them to begin.
Certainly, uh, so this is a, uh, the, uh, two variable, the, the goal here, conversation came up about, was it that variable interest rates on two, uh, loans that you have out, one of those is a county loan, one of those is a school loan, um, give us areas of what loans are, what, what loan scale is, is the interest rate coming up, they're both on variable at this time, and that variable interest, you know, a year ago, it was two percent, the budget, now three percent, over looking at, maybe four point six, since it changed. I can't do it, we don't know, that, but really, four point six has changed, and it's steadily on an increase, so the conversation's come up to take those two notes, put them into one, um, one loan here in the states, um, and, um, move them into a fixed rate, four point one two was been offered, uh, on this case, um, saves us, um, quite a bit of, of money right now, and noted where we are, actually, I think, just even noted, and figuring these pieces up, and speaking for, to wish is for sure that, uh, even in the origination fees of nearly ten thousand dollars, that would be saved in the first, more than that even have to be made up in the first year, just of interest, but what it's, where that man, so it's a, a pretty strong piece. This one is a little different, I think those two notes are still on scale for fourteen years, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's for payoff time, or those, as they're sick that long. This loan is five years fixed, and then after five years, it would be something that'll be coming back, to look at, whether it's, going to be continuous, if it's four point one nine, or, or four point one two, or so, or is there going to be a change? So that's kind of where that sits, of course, if, if there is, if a better interest rate, it is, I'm going to go to the bank, there would be a new origination fee, you know, pieces as well. Hopefully it stays somewhat close, I guess, they're not high after five years, but those are things we can't, um, can't know at this point, we just know on the second day. It was favorable, uh, five to zero as well, to, to bring these two levels together, the bottom there's one, and, uh, put them under that piece, no, one, one, two, um, going on, I don't think we discussed uh, that payment, but it's still going to be the same payment we're making now, actually a little less, to be honest with you, uh, we're going to pay less interest. Think that's about all of this, it's a little different than the other one, but it's not a straight, straight basis, five years, and there's, there's still fourteen years of, uh, so there's still some time, nine years of time on that, they have.
I think it gives a, a figure of like ninety-seven, ninety-two origination fee on this one, but like Mr. Ben is figuring, like within the first year, we save our money back on that, if y'all had any questions, people, and in other words, we talked about it, it's like a fifteen hundred dollar origination thing, that's, that's unbelievable, really, for origination fee on that. Does anybody got any more comments or questions in regard to this? Thank you for coming, Mr.
And that will be the bound to ask.
Yeah, now's the time, we got questions, he's here, I mean, we'll be here Monday night, and I'm ready to bring you there.
Well, if, if, if it's a mission, I will be here.
Anybody like, anybody got any questions they'd like to ask anybody, just in regards to the resolution?
I'm not sure I can improve on the chairman's comments, he did a great job summarizing everything.
What banker you?
So, I, I worked with the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, which is a, it's a member service organization that was created by the Tennessee, it's believed in Tennessee County Services Association back in the late eighties. And all we do is, we work directly with local governments, and we do loans, basically, inside, we've worked with, uh, Hartsell County, on twenty-one loans, and about twenty-seven plus million dollars over the past thirty years. Um, ranging anywhere from sixty thousand all the way up to, I think, seven and a half million or more, and you know, we, uh, we work with the next banks, and we just send out requests from governments, um, and say, give us your best rate, and we, we.
Not, we're moving, anything else, we'll move on to our ordinances. I guess it's just the public hearing, a second reading on these, the ordinance, uh, two eighty-eight, two oh three two five, the order sets the way, ways, or roll off, comfort services. It's been approved, uh, the first readings, if I got any places on this one, this was also written, uh, come from public works, from regular, the recommended also. If I got any places on this? Uh, we'll move on to next orders, two ninety, two oh three three two seven. My order from me and our, uh, section five four oh two oh, is on a resolution, part of just saying, the northern order for the county bond, who's only tax now. Oh, one six, part, oh, oh, six one seven, remain one dollar. Anybody, this wrote the list here, this is just the second reading on here, anybody got any questions on this? On Temple Road, and it was also recommended in the plain news. Alrighty, we'll move on. Next order is two ninety-one, two oh three, that is two eight. Orders making appropriations for the various funds, department of institution, office, and agencies, this is the budget. What the question called, it passed the purpose, it's, it's, they, uh, next reading, don't leave it. I don't have time to speak up, if you're, I ain't giving discussions on this.
We'll need to go over the procedure of how the second and third reading works, if Mr. Butler can take that for me.
Assuming we get past the second, uh, reading, uh, on these items, if you want to get to the, do a third reading, uh, the same night, you will have to have two thirds of the commission allow to, uh, do that for the third reading, to do that on the second reading, which you got to have a two-thirds, uh, super majority to do that, that would be fourteen, that's, that requires, you'll have to agree.
And I assume to get that, we, we need to do that.
Going back to the loan, if I'm not mistaken, I heard you created, sir, that that is, that rate, that four point one four rate is locked into July fourteen?
Yes, sir, so the, the rates that we quoted today on the, on the loans will be good, the commission adopts, like, June about the sixth, even, the fourth, notice on this.
If they don't pass that now, maybe if it does, I mean, we still could, might have to have a special call, and if we have to come back to try to get it before, 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 thank you. Somebody got any comments on this, Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Tyler, um, has the school board gotten with my one, you can say that? Or is the new one? Did that decrease from what you were at, maybe, or did it not? So what are the rest? The final is a bit less. Um, do you have that number? We now have it written, uh, it is on May yesterday, you, the revenue, the rate stay, and, uh, until July, I don't think, and then that would be a question, it's, uh, I had a talking with, um, with John Curd, he had told me that, y'all don't usually get your actual number until the state passes their budget. Uh, I hadn't heard whether the state is actually passing it yet, um, but, or. Well, that would be, I would, I would, I would, I would pay, they're full, we're on June, too. Brown, June, you know, it's from May, it was a little bit less, a little less, a little late, but July, um, I know this is. But the, I mean, all the cap losses to the state, that would be, you know, in the. I guess, I'm, I'm trying to get, I know this is the first year of, you know, the teeth and formula versus what we had before, I wanted to know, did you finally know what, or that revenue flow, the income from the state? To, to me, uh, to me, but, we have seen that three, it started from April, and then The March, April, May, no, definitely, the, the, I'm similar. I mean, that's not, not, I'm, I'm, someone's saying about, you know, or moving about. It's the, it's the revenue from the state, though, from the state, but. Okay, so I guess what I'm getting confused in your answer, um, that, that was, that money would have already been on the last year's bill, if not, it's coming years ago. I'm, I'm asking for this year's principal, if you have those. I do, I have the estimates, the most recent one is from the, nothing. I don't have any, I don't have any, but I do not have a July time today. As far as for your budgeting for next? Correct. Do you know that you see the, either from, from the book, that it's going to be May, that's.
Alrighty, let's move on to the next order, two nine two, two oh three, two nine. Order fixing the tax levy in the general services fund for the Hartford County government for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty three. We see the rate there at one point nine eight seven seven. That will be going on. Everybody got any questions or comments on this? Alright, so we'll move on, order two nine three, two oh three. That is thirty, the order is making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and services, from as far as, and we're looking to do our first. Two thousand twenty three, it is June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. This, they voted on by the whole commission, the tax levies is voted on by the, uh, the next one, when somebody says tax levy is voted on by the Urban Services Council. It's just the, the president, money base, this will be voted on by the whole body. You might got any questions on this? Next one is orders two nine four, two oh three, thirty, that's thirty one, uh. The order is fixing the tax levy of the Urban Services Fund, that's one of the three, I was about on that tax levy for the Urban Services. Man, it's running slow. Alright, it's moving on to budget, that's the next thing we got. And all the ones we're looking at, uh, budget finance, just over there, they recommended all of these to the whole court, so. Got any questions, we start here with, uh, one on one dash two five, cleanup batteries. Uh, Jackie, David, property taxes, uh. And you say what all it's created, and here's, anybody got any questions on this? If I got any questions on this budget. Comments? Not when we're on the one on one, two six, rescue and fire grant. Then what is doing here, then? I mean, you want to give us some, if I got any questions on any of these.
I'm not saying, but they find us to be standing on these, they've all having very important questions, uh, from budget finance. They were, they did all in favor of which. What we're looking at right now is just grant, being appropriate to grant those. Six, risk and burdens.
But on the one, it's eleven day, uh, Urban Services, this year they did property taxes, to go in some of the shirts over, overtime, Urban Services. Questions on this? That's something we have discussed in budget finance, always, we really got to start looking at overtime, we've got to hit hard this year on there. Overtime, that's something that's got to be cleaned up, really looked at. All right, we're going to one eighteen oh three EMS overtime. Seems like every month, we have to put a lot of that on Mr. Collins.
So, as, the last couple of EMS subcommittee meetings that I've attended, uh, Mr. Beatty has been asked how his staffing was. And what he was going to do to reduce this number, every time we called, that it should be under control, he's staffed now, it shouldn't be an issue. I believe this is the third one this year that he's brought in the last couple of months, cleaning up his overtime. Um, I know there was a statement made during budget finance tonight, that, uh, if he brought anymore, they wouldn't be approved. Um, I would state that that's kind of a hollow statement, being that this is the last month of the budget year. Uh, any overruns he would have, we wouldn't see those till in the next fiscal year. It just seems through the questions and the answers we've gotten in emergency services, this is the way he knows to run the department. And so, we either need to be happy with that, or we need to find another director. Uh, we're not really getting any other answers on this overtime solution. Um, it just keeps being said, well, everyone's having trouble, and this is just the way it is. So, we either just need to be, understand that that is the way it is, or we need to look at maybe someone with other answers. Anybody else got any comments on this?
I think it is something that's been looked into, will be looked into, I think, I think it has been, and something has got. Somebody else? It's all, when you get anything, it's turning. Saying what he would say. Alrighty, we'll move on. The one fifty one oh two. Being, one fifty one, that service budget follows. Year is cleaned up, a lot of everything, great song, just worth it, great song, our revenue interest rates is on this one, if I got any questions on this. All this, all this is clean up, one thirty one oh four, highway department. I think you saw from, uh, Quip, uh. The gray line, line, out of overuse, and they have revenues from equipment, so. Any, got any questions, comments on this? One forty one, dash eleven, it's a arts commission, the question's here, I might have been in one forty four, purpose, general purpose, good, that is follows. Uh, David, uh, further state education funds, created in community service, to contact services. Fifteen hundred from Tennessee Arts Commission Fund, will be used to provide our program in the after school program. Like Mr. Gully gave us some, uh, a, a date on after school program, we said it's for summer school program, what's been really going in.
In, uh, summer camp, just going to make.
Okay, yeah, for the next one. Yeah, the next one is one, uh, one point one dash twelve.
This, this, this one, actual program, maybe for the summer camp, one of the, uh. The arts commission for arts program, the actual program.
No, it, it doesn't, it's, it is revenue committed, and we, uh, we gave it to the, uh, after school program.
This one fifty one, dash twelve, that are increased, that was set because of, uh. Forty six, eight, thirty nine, capital later, by God, it's cancer, salary, three, two, years of each career, if anybody can fix it, started direct performance, somebody got any questions on this? Comment. Did you, are you God's counselor, or sorry?
You know, you think about this time of the year, when you're budgeting, and then all of a sudden you get a different person, you know, what time's going to start? And they have more degrees, and years of experience raises that salary.
What's, well, this one, but yeah.
That was it.
I got any comments, questions, I'm gonna go. The next one is the one forty one, thirteen, summer learning, that's one I'll just talk about, Mr. Gully was talking about. I think everybody's going real well with you.
There's something, there's something, there's something, the summer school, I agree, but, it's not the, summer schools, you might have used to have thought about, it's not students that have failed, and then you go to summer school. They might have very, these are students that are actually, uh, they're actually, uh, in a, their next year's class is already, so they're safe, so it's not. Just to keep that, that clear, it's not, it's not students that have failed, and then you go back. For the most part, this, you've probably seen something about third graders, but I have been. Cross, you've seen something about third grade.
Anybody got any comments, questions, little miss? Not, we move on to one forty one, fourteen, summer camp, transportation, I guess, plan to bus drivers for their summers. Any comments or questions, don't give it. That all we get.
I have no respect.
Well, it is, yeah, the owner will be brought up the night of the meeting. Any other business, they've been brought up tonight? Elaine, they could be discussed.
Yeah, I've got something, but, uh, Judge, maybe you can help me out with this. Mr. Gully brought up, obviously, that we're going to build a jet. And also, he brought up about a wheel tax that we have to start thinking about. I think we need to start thinking about looking at some property, too, um, there's some signs going up around town, heck, one right across from Sheriff's Department. Is there a way that, or so I need to make the motion or something to get it to where the Americans start doing some negotiations on some of these properties?
You want to add it to next week's agenda, you can, uh, was there something probably to talk about, founded workshop, about what the specifics of that are, that way everybody's informed.
Right.
Kind of packed, but, uh, that, uh, I think that there's, like, a lot of others, and we need to be aware of that property going up for sale. Is out there, but at some point, uh. The commission's going to be asked to look at these issues, and explore these issues, whether wheel tags, property tag, whatever it takes. Uh, but the, the first and foremost thing that I think we need to consider is, is looking at acquisition of property. Property acquisition is the very first step that you would have, which kind of the architect, to kind of know what, what we're looking at, with. I don't know, I'm not seeing specific numbers, if they crossed my desk and forgotten already, but, um. At, at some point, uh, it would be advisable for, uh, the commission to authorize, and link at the very least. To the, the mayor's office, and I know the mayor and the justice, or sheriff, to look at properties, come back for approval, uh, at some point. I'm not saying necessarily delegate all authority, because you don't want to know what, what we're getting, uh, what you, what you're paying for. That's something that, that this body would look at, but you need to give them some direction to start doing that, as, as a point for that, we, if they have to. Uh, they have to get, uh. Uh, uh, appraisers, or they have to get surveyors, or they have to get, uh, their own, uh, agents to, to do that. You're going to want them to do that, so, something along those lines, giving them that authority, to, to, at least.
Just the authority to talk and look and do nothing, I mean, I, I'm sure I know the answer to this, but not buy.
Negotiate.
Okay.
Approval, uh, towards.
Okay.
So, so could that be negotiated in the, it's a contract, and here's what we're bringing to you, depending.
How much can we get it for? We'll sell it to you for X dollars.
And it's negotiated depending on, depends, approval then.
Exactly, you can always get into contingencies with your, your contract, and. Want to give some form of authority to at least do that, uh, and, so. That was, that would be my two cents on it, my recommendation. Want to add that to the, does anybody have any questions, I mean, I've just been asked to talk, so I'm just talking.
I assume that's in a form of a resolution.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that.
That's, it would be a resolution, right?
Give the authority to do, uh, to do that, uh, is that what you wanted to do?
Yes.
Agenda?
Yes.
Y'all heard the discussion here, do y'all think we're going to put that on the agenda for our Monday night meeting, or?
I'd like to, I was, I agree with it.
So, y'all, I will, that was a resolution worded. So, some of that nature.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think it needs to get started, like, so we're going to get back to, this is all here.
I ask, that's something.
We already aren't. Golly.
So, we are in a situation that they're not creating any more, and it didn't get any.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So, it's down, the more expensive it's going to be.
Yeah.
Want to mention, we've got a really good industry right now, you know, so. That's something.
Guys, that's all I've got, if anybody else on the other business, not when we're on the public comment, especially, uh.
Have any idea when we might, uh, go back to the court, I, I've got to admit, there's many votes, and yeah, I have no idea. For the, I.
We discussed this in our public works meeting, Mr. Slade was here, he, he thought we probably could get in this month, this next week. But I think, this, I mean, he says it probably is going to be the July meeting, we should be there.
We, we are hoping to start committee meetings at the courthouse in July. Uh, Mr. Ted, who helped set up the AV system in the courthouse, is coming in next week, we should get that all cleaned up and, uh, tested. Um, and hopefully, we can start having meetings over there, and everybody can start hearing again.
So, she said we probably can start having our committee meeting started in July with her, too. That's all I've got, the next thing I say is public comment, is anybody here in the public, please, might comment, the public comments? If not, I hear motion adjourned, motion adjourned, second possibility, thank y'all.